I'd like to call the meeting to order. Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brusink.
Here.
Steve Edlin.
Here.
Ellen Langill.
Here.
Patricia Madden. Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien. Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. And both Pat Madden and Kurt O'Brien, they're traveling out of town in their excuse for the evening. Will you please, Sue, verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. And tonight, this is a special meeting of the full school board. As always, at the end of October, we have to take care of our financial matters for the 2014-2015 school year. There will be four items that we're going to address this evening. And the outcomes of the first two items will determine the motions required for the last two agenda items. The four items that we're going to be looking at tonight is awarding guaranteed energy savings performance contract to Siemens Industries. Second item will be resolution to exceed revenue limit on a non-recurring basis. Our third item will be the approval of the 2014-2015 budget. And last item for action for our consideration will be the approval of the 2014-2015 operational capital expansion and debt service tax levy. And I've been told by Lori, we have to take it in this order. So we're going to begin this evening with our first item, the awarding of the guaranteed energy savings performance contract to Siemens Industries. Call on Pat McCaffrey, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. In August of this year, two board workshops were held to review the findings of a facility study conducted by Siemens Industries Incorporated. The purpose of the study was to identify areas where there were safety concerns, deferred maintenance issues, and opportunities to conserve energy and reduce utility costs. On September 10, 2014, the board narrowed the scope of the findings and approved a prioritized list of projects to address deferred maintenance concerns, mechanical systems needs, and structural improvements while providing energy savings. The cost of the projects was capped at $8 million. A resolution authorizing the borrowing in the same amount was also approved at that time. The next step in the process is to issue a performance contract as required by statute if the district is going to fund the projects under energy efficient revenue limit exemption. The Finance and Facilities Committee approved the motion to award a performance contract to Siemens Industries Incorporated for the purpose of implementing the board-approved facility improvement measures identified by the board on September 10, 2014, an ISO move.
Second?
It's been moved by Patrick McCaffrey and seconded by Ellen Langill. Discussion? Mr. Baumgart?
Just a question. Excuse me, Pat or remember the FNF. I wanted to be sure we're talking about the same list that we approved at the September meeting as the list that we're talking about for the $8 million?
Yes, it is correct.
So we're staying right at what was approved at the prior board meeting?
That is correct.
At the September board meeting. Thank you.
I'll call the question.
Dr. Langill?
I'll call the question.
Oh. Okay, Sue, why don't we take the vote?
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
No.
Kurt O'Brien, sorry. Ellen Langill?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
No.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 5-2. Okay, Pat.
Okay, moving on. The next action item is a resolution to exceed revenue limit on non-recurring basis. In order to fund the work being done under the performance contract, the district intends to issue $8 million in general obligation promissory notes with a final maturity of seven years at the November 12 board meeting. The statutes allow the board to levy for the debt repayment outside of the revenue limits under an energy efficiency exemption as long as the board annually approves a resolution to exceed the revenue limit with the amount to be levied. The tentative debt schedule has a larger payment due in the first year to coordinate with a larger state aid payment for the 2014-15 year. The initial $2 million payment has a 23 cent per mill impact on the 2014-15 tax levy and brings the total mill rate up to $9.08. This compares to last year's rate of $9.11. The committee approved the resolution provided in our packets to exceed revenue limits in the amount of $2 million on a non-recurring basis per Wisconsin statute 121.91 parent 4 parent O for debt service payments included under the energy efficient exemption and ISO move.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Edlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a question about the funding because it's a non-recurring referendum. If the state legislature should end Act 35 next year, would we then be funding this under revenue limits?
I'm going to defer to...
Typically, typically, they would grandfather the debt, but I mean, it's just, I don't know. I mean, they could potentially pass a law that removed it and didn't grandfather, but typically, they've grandfathered those kind of things when there have been changes. At least, that was experienced back in the early '90s when they came on with revenue controls and that impacted the general obligation debt. So I'm just going under, that's just an assumption, though, based on past experience.
Thank you.
Do we know if there is any discussion such as that?
I've not heard any, and I don't expect we would hear any until after the election at this point.
Okay. Mrs. Brusink?
Yes, when Siemens came in and presented us with their total study, there were several phases, you know, of things that we needed that I think amounted to about 30 million or more, correct? I mean, we just agreed on a small portion of what we're going to do right now, but there's more that needs to be done?
Yes, there is a list that consists of many other projects.
Right, that's what I thought. However, when we get finished with this and then want to do more, then we have to do the same thing all over again. The process will be the same, right?
If that law is still in place, then.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we can handle it a lot of different ways, and that's what we would debate at that time. So this is just one way that we can do this.
Do we have to wait until this is paid for before we get into another phase?
No, I believe not.
Okay. Just needed to know that.
I don't know of any reason why we would.
But I mean, you know, keep in mind that 30 million, there were needs and wants on there.
Of course, of course.
But, yeah, we could do another one in a couple of years, too, if we needed to.
Because there's some other important things needing to be addressed, and I would hate to think of never addressing that. Thank you.
Mr. Baumgart?
I just want to have a clear understanding of the non-recurring basis. And so is this an exemption in the state law that says we can spend money on certain things without going into the revenue cap? Is that what's happening?
Correct, correct. For energy-type projects, it's the, they exempt the borrowing normally. You would go to referendum for this type of thing. This allows you to, we still put it out there, we didn't, you need X amount of signatures to force a referendum. If enough people came forward, we still could have been in a referendum situation, but we've gotten past that time period. And so this allows us to pay the debt outside of the revenue cap if we wish. Now, again, and I've said this before, if we're in a situation where the budget is healthy enough, we can still offset some of that debt payment with, under the revenue cap, if it makes sense to do that in order to reduce the tax burden. But it does give us flexibility in times when the budget may be so very tight. And again, we're not going to know that until after the election, so.
Well, in each year, we will have to pass the resolution.
Comes back.
And I would expect that the Finance and Facilities Committee would have a full conversation, discussion, you know, looking at what various options are available. Like, if we did have the option to maybe pay down with some monies that we had available, we could talk about it at that time.
And the way I heard the discussion from, coming forward from FNF, is that the 2 million would probably not be the same number every year. It could actually be less in subsequent years because this is kind of get started.
Yes, as a matter of fact, there is a schedule. What are the other years predicted at? Would you read those off for us?
Certainly. And actually, the debt schedule is the last page of the performance contract, if you want to follow along. Year two, and I should point out that one of the requirements under this exemption is that the identified energy savings have to be used to pay against the principal and interest of the debt. So that is a reduction, and then we have the ability to then levy for the difference.
Okay.
So the estimated payments outside of that reduction in the portion for the utilities, next year would be $1,308,000, and each of the next five years is roughly $1,600,000.
Thank you.
So the first year is a little heavier because we have a higher-than-expected state aid, which brings down the operational levy. So this blends in and takes advantage of that savings from the state aid side and tries to flatten the mill rate.
One more question.
Mrs. Brusink?
Were you referring to this page, Lori?
Yes.
Okay. And in looking this over today, I noticed in the very, very last column, it says 8,500 net cost, 8,543,171. I thought it was just a straight 8 million. What's the 541? Is that savings?
That's the net impact on the total budget. So principal and interest combined are 8,463,000. We are going to experience utility savings of about $1,005,000. In subsequent years, because we, in most years, are negative tertiary.
Yes.
We have a reduction in state aid, and it even factors that in to get to that last column.
Thank you.
Mrs. Reinacek?
Thank you. I had a conversation with Todd briefly about our fund balance and if that is so large, why we had to borrow money if we actually had the money in the bank. And maybe, Todd, maybe if you could explain that, maybe some other people out there.
Well, first of all, our fund balance is a representation of potential assets we have over the both liabilities or expenditures and so on. That's not all, I mean, that's not a cash number. It's not like we have 30 million sitting in a bank account unused. So there's one factor. Second of all, we use all that fund balance for our annual operating costs when we, and this time of year, it gets really, really tight. If we use this money or some of this money to pay for this, we would then be borrowing long-term, I mean, short-term. We do short-term borrowing, but every year. So I mean, if we reduce the fund balance, that would be a permanent reduction. And then each year from this point on, we'd be borrowing a like amount or maybe even more to cover that loss. So one way or another, we'd be borrowing something. This, at least this particular one, gives us some flexibility in how we handle it with our budget. The borrowing for short-term is always under the cap. That can never be outside the cap.
When Kurt O'Brien talked about if the South Boiler were to go, we would have cold kids, I don't think that's, I don't, we have enough money for emergency purposes like this.
Yes.
So do we have...
Our kids don't have to worry about being cold at all. It might be a big financial imposition. We may have to cut some other projects to get it done, but we certainly would have the resources to get something like a single project done like that.
That's what our fund balance is for, for things that happen.
Right. But again, we're also using a fund balance so we don't have to do short-term borrowing so that we can meet our cash flow obligations each month without having to go to the credit card on that one, so.
Mr. Edlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I hear what you're saying, Todd, but that's under the assumption that next year, we wouldn't be able to put anything into fund balance. And every year after that subsequently, it would be flat. And I don't see that happening for us, especially in light of, you know, we're locked into the same price that we had last year for propane fuel for our buses. So, you know, that's almost a, you know, gas and diesel prices have dropped recently. So that's, you know, our savings may not be another $900,000, but it'd be substantial. And I don't see the state cutting us back on state aid at all. So I'm assuming that next year, we're going to have a surplus in the fund balance to be able to redistribute through our various pots of money that we have to set aside for restricted and unrestricted and whatever we decide to do with it. But I think if we waited another year to take a look at where we're at financially, we could probably finance this thing within our budget without having to exceed revenue limits.
Again, with this kind of debt, we have options to pay it off early, to defuse it. I mean, it gives us a lot of, if you're right, if we have that big of a, if our health insurance comes in that good again, and we have that big, huge bump in fund balance, we could look at this and say, okay, let's defuse a portion of this so that it really doesn't hit the property tax like it, you know, like we're expecting it to. So it does give us a lot of flexibility, you know, how we fund the debt on this over the next couple of years. You're absolutely right. If we get another nice, we can decide, and our fund balance does require the board to look at certain balances over 15%, whether it goes for tax reduction, new programs. And that could be one of those things that we look at and say, okay, we got a higher-than-expected fund balance, and let's see, maybe we can offset some of this debt outside of the tax levy.
Are we going to be decreasing the capital improvement budget at all?
I would expect we'd be increasing versus decreasing. That would be my hope. I don't have any plans for any reductions.
Okay.
So I don't think anyone else does. I don't know.
Right. Yeah, that's really, I mean, this, we've kind of, we're beating a dead horse here, but this wasn't about energy savings. It was all about offloading costs out of the capital budget, capital improvement budget. And the state statute is, Kurt O'Brien, I have to agree with him, is very poorly written because you install things like, you know, you're replacing your life safety systems. There is zero energy savings on something like that, but the statute allows us to do that. And that's why I think there's going to be concern, or there should be concern, that state legislature next year will be looking at laws like this and, you know, truly having to tweak or eliminate what's in there, just because Act 10 has just done such a superb job for school districts statewide and being able to put finances in a different order. So I guess that's it.
Just to, going back to Mrs. Reinacek's fund balance question, I just want to put this in perspective. And many of us have been on the board a number of years, and prior to me coming on the board, we had zero fund balance. There wasn't any rainy day fund for this district.
Right.
So back in the early to mid-'90s, a policy went into place to build that up, to start to build a rainy day fund, essentially. And I remember when I got on the board, which is over 12 years ago, that balance was right around, I think, $3 million. And just to, and what that meant back then was that if we had to tap into that, we could operate our district for maybe one or two weeks. So it really still wasn't a very big rainy day fund. Right now, if we had to tap into it, realize that there's parts of it that are restricted and that we can't tap into the full amount. There are certain things that we have to keep monies for. And we're finally at a point, after many, many years, to building up a fund balance that will at least allow us to operate for about, maybe a month and a half or so, roughly would be my guess, if we had to just strictly turn to that. We're starting to hit that 15% as an upper limit. That's the first time. And the Finance and Facilities Committee is going to be looking at that over this next year. So this is the first time that we've had any rainy day fund that amounted to anything that would allow us to truly have a real rainy day fund, is what I'm trying to say. And so now we'll look at it in this next year and see what that looks like. The other thing that I want to bring up is, remember, we started last year to self-insure. And I recall one of the things that our consultants had said was that, one, maybe two years out of five, you're going to have really a lot of claims, and you got to make sure that you have the reserve there. And we're looking at roughly, to start out with, about a $5 million reserve goal is what our consultant said we should have. We're not there yet. We're getting close, but we're not quite there yet. So we have some factors that are going on here. So this last year, the addition to the rainy day fund or the general fund balance, a good portion of that was to build up that reserve for self-insurance, and we have to do that. So we will take a much closer look at this over the next year, see what's restricted, what's not restricted. And this dialogue will have to occur again anyways because of the resolution that we have to pass every year. So this will naturally fall into our budgetary discussions throughout the year. Other questions or comments? Mrs. Brusink?
Is this the place that we would ask questions on the entire agreement, or is that going to be coming up later?
That was the last one.
That was before.
Okay.
Yeah, we're looking at the resolution right now.
Okay. It's no big deal.
All right. Sue, why don't you take the roll call? And this is to, this is for the resolution to exceed the revenue limit on a non-recurring basis of $2 million.
Steve Edlin?
No.
Karen Reinacek?
No.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. 5-2, it passes, Sue. Okay, we'll move on to our next action item. Patrick?
The next action item is the approval of the 2014-2015 budget. Now that all the components of the revenue cap are known, we are in a position to finalize the budget for the 2014-2015 year. The budget was originally presented in July, and the public hearing was held in September. With the inclusion of the energy efficiency projects and the initial 2 million debt payment, total revenues are budgeted at $169,625,799. And total expenditures are budgeted at $166,270,324. The breakdown by fund is included on page four of the budget reconciliation document. The mill rate will be $9.08. I move to approve the 2014-15 budget as presented in the amount of $169,625,799 total revenue and $166,270,324 total expenditures for all funds excluding operating transfers in accordance with the Department of Public Instruction's recommended format for budget approval. An ISO move.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Mr. Baumgart? Discussion?
I just have one question, and I did look this over, so maybe you can answer it, or Lori, I don't know. When I'm on a board, and often it's nonprofits, which I suppose we sort of are, but anyway, I always like to see both figures. So where am I missing the 169 that you just moved? Because I see the 166,273,24, and I don't see it, that's 66. Okay. It's not here, though. So it shouldn't be here? I know, it's in the purple, but why isn't it here? Wouldn't it be here? Or is it just not supposed to be here?
Oh, you're looking at the summary?
Yeah. It just seemed like it should be in the summary, but I don't know. That would just make life easy.
It's on page four.
I know, I know, I saw that, but it's not here.
The reason it isn't here is because you have to back out. The reason it isn't on the summary is you have to back out the inter-fund transfers, and the format only shows it on the expenditure side. I don't know why the format doesn't back it out of the revenue side.
Okay, I don't know either.
But that's what DPI wants us to do, correct?
This is a DPI-required format, that's it.
Yeah.
It doesn't always make sense with...
We can just say DPI.
Well, it doesn't always make sense with what we need to locate.
DPI procedural. I got it answered.
Dr. Anne Langill?
My question is answered.
You bring up a good point. We do see the budget in a variety of formats. There's some formats that the federal government requires, some that the state government requires, and then there's some that are more useful to us.
Right.
So...
Okay, thank you. That answers it.
Excellent question. Mr. Edlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to dovetail on what you were speaking about with fund balance a little while ago. You know, two years ago, our fund balance was around 17 million, and it took us 15 years to get to that point. And since last year, we were able to park about 3 million in there, so it brought it up to around 21 million. And this year, we were able to park about 8 million in it. We're close to around 30 million. In two years, we've been able to put between 10 and 11 million dollars in the fund balance, and that's incredible. That is absolutely incredible when you consider and look back, 2005 and maybe a few years after that, where everything in the district was about which program are we going to eliminate? Which teachers are we going to fire? You know, we were looking for ways to make ends meet. And, you know, when you have a turnaround like that, if it were in the private sector, you'd be doing cartwheels. And I think we have reason to celebrate because now, instead of talking about which programs we're going to be cutting, which teachers we're going to be firing, we're talking about having this surplus of money, and we just have to figure out which bucket to put it in. And that's a good thing. That's a very good thing. It's much happier to do that than to give out pink slips. And, you know, we've actually hired teaching staff over the last few years. So, you know, I said this at the FNF meeting, I'm going to say it again. You know, I thank Governor Walker for Act 10. It gives us the complete flexibility to be able to turn our district around, and that's what's happened. And I'm glad to be in this position that we're in right now. Thank you.
No comments? I'd like to just play off that a little bit. I think most of the credit goes to Mr. Gray and his right-hand people. There's been all the assistant superintendents, all the people in administration, and actually all the teachers. Everyone has helped with this, whether it was new ideas for saving energy, whether it was figuring out ways to tighten our budgets in areas that it could be tightened in. And all of this was accomplished without laying off a single person and without cutting any programs. You're absolutely correct, Mr. Edlin, and that is, should be a feather in the cap of this administration. But that did not come easily. It wasn't just a simple change in Act 10. There were some very good decisions that were made, and there were sacrifices that were made by our employees also to get us to where we are. And those need to be recognized also.
Mr. Como?
Dr. Langill?
Thank you. I do try to repeatedly suggest we not get political here, so I would appreciate it if we didn't. But I also think that before, we put too many feathers in our cap or anyone else's cap. And not to take anything away from you, Todd, we have to recognize that we still have bigger class sizes than we would like. We have no librarians. We have virtually no counselors. We have a lot to do in this district, from music to other programs. So, I mean, things aren't quite as happy and rosy as we might want to think. It's not that we haven't done a good job in other ways, I think we have. But we have a lot of challenges that we really, I think, ought to look at, too. So that's not a political comment, it's just a perceptual statement.
That's fact.
Yep.
All right, are we ready to take the vote? Sue?
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
No.
Ellen Langill?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
No.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
No.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
5-2.
Passes 5-2. And then we'll move on to our final action item of the evening.
All right, excellent. Next up is the approval of the 2014-15 operational capital expansion and debt services tax levy. I move to approve the tax levy for the district in the amount of $78,791,776 for operational purposes, including $1,125,000 for the capital expansion fund and $2 million for the debt service fund. And I so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
No, seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Langel. Mr. Edlin?
I am going to support this particular motion. You know, it represents the work that our administration has done, you know, in trying to make sure that our teachers are well compensated. We've had an increase in benefits this year. We'll be throwing more money in capital expansion, although I surely would like to see a list going forward of what the money is going to be spent on in the capital expansion fund because I didn't, I don't quite frankly know what we're expanding it for, because we offloaded a lot of capital projects out of it and into the energy exemption program. And quite frankly, some of the things that are done under the energy exemption program weren't even in our capital improvement budget for the next five years. In spite of that, I am going to support that. Our debt services levy, you know, we're nearly debt-free except for the debt that was approved this evening, so we're headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Mrs. Reinacek?
I just wanted to say something to Todd because Steve probably wouldn't tell you, but in front of a crowd of people, large crowd of people this weekend, Steve said we have the best superintendent in the state, and no one better take him from us.
Oh, thank you, Steve.
He does recognize you, and so do I, so.
That's good information.
Thank you.
That makes my week.
Thank you for all that you're doing.
Well, it's, again, all the credit goes to the people that I work with. I think you know, my theory is you hire the best people that can, you stay out of their way, and I think that's clear in all areas of this district, and that's coming through tonight with this, so.
Any other comments? Okay, Sue, take the vote, please.
Ellen Langel?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Steve Edlin?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
Passes 7-0. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out on this wonderful October evening. Don't usually have special board meetings during the months, but October, we can always count on that one, so meeting stands adjourned.